The Board met in an executive session part of this meeting and will reconvene in an executive session following the end of this public meeting. Joining me this evening from the Board is myself, Jim McCaffrey, Vice Chair Pete Germain, the Clerk Aaron Underhill. We also have the Town Administrator Mike Gazinski and the Operations Manager Karen Burey. We're going to start with a couple of announcements. The first set of announcements will involve a report back relative to the COVID situation and vaccines and whatnot. I've asked the Director of Health Department John McVeigh and the Chair of our Emergency Management Planning Committee Chief Barrett to just address the Board and the community about the latest developments with respect to COVID as it impacts the Town of Millis and its citizens. So I'll start with you, John, if you could just start off the conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman McCaffrey. Good evening. Presently, everyone's looking for the update on vaccinations. Currently, we're in Phase One, and we've actually started that. We've done the first dosing for Phase One for first responders. Phase Two is going to be sometime mid-February. Well, I should say the second dose of Phase One will be mid-February. The Governor today, meeting with the Secretary of Health and Human Services, 5:00 p.m. this afternoon. Phase Two should be rolling out in February 1st. Now, Phase Two vaccinations, as we know, there are individuals 75 and older. They tear down each phase into, you know, priority tiers. Age 75 would be the first tier, and then the second tier would be 65 years old with two coma victims. You get into education workers, employers, sanitation workers, food pantry workers, transit employees, and the list is online. We have all the links at the town website. They get the detailed links on who's included with each phase, three phases, Phase One, Two, and Three. We're presently working on the town itself, the just staffing for town clinic that will be performed. Bear in mind, there's a multi-pronged plan for efficiency and speed regarding the vaccination process. Mass vaccination sites will be up. They are already up, but they will be up accordingly in greater quantity within the next couple of weeks. You know, you're talking Gillette Stadium, Penn Run Park, you're talking hotels, Big Y, Walgreens, and CPS's and Spotsy Look Page. So this is, you know, within the next, it'd be multiple sites in the town to go to vaccination. So looking at what I have, with 165 sites potentially in the works, vaccinated, a lot of people. I've talked to people who've been to sites like Gillette, and they say it's great. It's, you know, people go through, and it's very efficient and so forth. But again, we are working to plan on a local site, near, near allocated vaccine. I think we're going to be focusing on the high-risk population in that regard. So that's the update I have for the vaccination. I'll leave this to the Emergency Management Director and Chief Barrett for information on this.
Thank you, John. Chief Barrett?
Thank you. I would agree with John said. We were lucky enough to get all first responders vaccinated. We'll be taking the second in the second week of February. I think the big message needs to be that the second round of vaccines will be February 1st. It doesn't mean that the folks will have in their possession vaccines for residents. You know, it's something that the Department of Public Health just commented a lot on is, you know, we know we need them. The big thing is getting them. I know John's been working really hard to try to get an order put in. It's just a free delivery. So residents, as you said, they're working really hard to set some stuff up. They always have clinics for our average population of 75, you know, come February. But, you know, as long as the residents have patients, we'll get the information out to them. We'll get the clinic set up and hopefully roll this out as quick as we can, provided as with vaccines.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to be sure that we had the latest reports. A lot of news going on every day, as was indicated, the Governor was on today as well. So it's a moving target, but I wanted to make sure that the residents of Millis understood that between our first responders, the emergency planning, and the Board of Health working very hard to deliver as much information as we can, as quickly as we can, but also authoritative information, which as Mr. McVeigh indicated, you have their links on our website, which will help you in that regard, and also to try and find a way for us to promote the use of vaccinations, whether it's through the centers outside of town or a clinic in town. And I just want to thank the team that's worked so hard on this. I'm not sure whether we're at the 30-yard line or the 40-yard line, but I think we're headed toward the goal. And I wanted to make sure we got this opportunity to share this information with the folks in town. So thank you very much. We will be doing this at every Select Board meeting, one way or the other, because it's a moving target. And I know we'll try to keep everybody informed. Thank you very much. There's one other announcement this evening that I want to make. It's a personal announcement, so if you'll bear with me. I just want to speak to the town about my intentions with respect to Select Board service. I will not be a candidate for reelection to the Select Board in May of 2021. It really has been my privilege to serve the people of this community on this board for the last six years, as well as a period of six years from 1993 to 1999. And I'm very grateful to the voters of the Town of Millis for the confidence they've had in me, and I've done my best to live up to their expectations. I really believe that serving for six consecutive years on the Board of Selectment or Select Board is probably the ideal length, at least in my view, length of service. It's enough time to articulate and work on a series of goals, and hopefully it's enough time to achieve many of those goals. But I also believe that after two terms, it really gives the opportunity for the member of the Board to step aside and to let others take the lead for what's going to happen in the future. Now, I know our town is in the midst of many challenges, some of which we've just talked about a minute ago, including the efforts to, you know, emerge from the pandemic. But believe me, and I think everyone on this call would agree, we have many opportunities in front of us as well. New businesses coming to town, new housing developments bringing in new revenue, and as importantly, new folks to participate in the running of our town and in helping us all to create the future for our town. So that being said, I would encourage anyone who is interested, who has the interest and the talent to share with the rest of the community, to seriously consider running for the open seat on the Select Board. Election is, I believe it's May 11th, so there's plenty of time to file your papers and show your indication of your interest. Millis is a wonderful community, and we all know that. And there's a great team to support anyone who wants to serve on the Board, a great team at Town Hall, and our great team in the DPW team, the first responders, the police and fire, on on and on. So there's a great team to support you, and most importantly, there's a great team for someone to take the opportunity to lead into the future. So with that, I thank you all. I am committed to working as hard as possible for the rest of my term. You will not have the good fortune of seeing me disappear after tonight. I will be here and work through, and I look forward to working with all of the folks on this call, all the members of this community, developing a budget for the coming fiscal year and a successful town meeting in May. So thank you very much. That's the end of our announcements for this evening, so we're going to move on to our agenda items. First item we have on our agenda is for the appointment of a police officer.
Well, we are still having issues for some reason. Apparently, I knocked, oh, wait a minute, nope, I knocked the chief off, and he cannot get back on. So I believe he's going to be calling us shortly. I gave him the number.
While he's calling, why don't we move to the next item, then?
Yeah, I think that it would be fine.
And saw Mr. Murphy there somewhere. Oh, there he is. Would like to talk to us about the donation bins for merit. So Karen?
Yes, so I apologize here. So Mr. Murphy is currently on the merit board, correct, Mr. Murphy?
That is correct.
He is, and he approached us. He is looking to help find a revenue source for merit. Obviously, usually, the usual items that they do are the usual fundraisers have not been possible due to COVID, and he had the idea that perhaps they could put out bins for clothing donations and go forward in that manner. So, Mr. Murphy, I'll let you speak to that.
Yes, thank you. As Karen said, we normally have different means of gaining funds. Our biggest fundraiser throughout the year is the Haunted Hair Ride at Tangerini's every year. That's where we make most of our money, but with COVID, we cannot do that. With grants still coming in, we want to be able to help the schools and help the children, but we just have no way of making money. And this is one way where we found that if we had clothing bins, we'd help donate, get proceeds, and still provide for those grants in the Town of Millis.
So tell us a little bit about some of the details, as to what kinds of bins, where you are suggesting you'd like to place those bins?
Absolutely. So we vetted different actors. The one we settled on is Beastie Textiles, and they currently have programs with Midway and Medfield. And we've asked the school Superintendent Mulaney. He has also asked the different principals, as well as the operations, to see where they would want the bins on school property. In the meantime, we asked the town whether we put it at the transfer station or at Town Hall. At this point, bangers cannot be choosers, so we will accept wherever we can get it to help the children. The way it will be dealt with is Beastie Textile will start with weekly pickups to gauge volume and ensure there's no debris outside of the bins. And if the volume's high, they will increase the amount of pickups. If it's less, they have to go one and a half weeks, two weeks between pickups. In the event that things fall through the crack, I have my services to make sure bins in the areas are clear. I have a 1-800-GOT-JUNK franchise where I can have teams on-site within a few hours to make sure those areas are clear at all times. That way, there's no debris scattered about.
Terrific. In some of the correspondence that we had included with our packet, there was a suggestion that we could place a collection bin down at the transfer station. I see Mr. McKay is on. I think he had supported that, but I want to make sure I understand from the DPW's point of view whether the place to put one of these bins. Mr. McKay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yes, I think this is a great endeavor, and as we know, that there is one down there, and it always seems to be overflowing. So I think there would be a great support for it down there, and I think that would be the best bet. People come in on Wednesdays and Saturdays all day. And like I said, we all know that, all of us that go to the transfer station, that bin is always overflowing. So I think, and it is another clothing bin that's there. So I see, we can put it right beside that, the one that's already there.
So from a logistical point of view, we've already got one there. There'll be a little competition among bins, but that's okay. But we know that we can manage that, particularly if we have a good partner who's going to be picking up the stuff. Any questions from the Board members?
Just basic curiosity. Is the way the fundraiser works that, is there like a price per pound or something that the textile company ends up donating? Is that how it works?
Correct. Yeah, so they obviously make money from the textiles, and they give us price per pound. And that, we'll use that for the fundraising.
Excellent, thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Germain?
Yes. I hate to ask the obvious, but what does merit stand for?
It's a good question. I had to look that up before I signed on. It is Millis Educational Resource Initiatives Team, where we provide funding for enrichment programs for the kids to better the public education they receive.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I can tell you that merit was up and running strongly when I was on the Board the last time. So it's not a new group. It's been going for a long time. So glad to see even the difficult times are coming up with some new ideas.
Absolutely.
So I guess what we'd like from the Board is a vote to allow the placement of a collection bin under the direction of the Director of the DPW down by the transfer station.
I'll move that we allow the placement of a bin down by the transfer station at the direction of the Director of the DPW. What about at school or VMB? Do we want one either of those places? Or the option for one?
I would just like-
The Director towards me?
Yes.
You could answer the question. I mean, it's a little, we've got a motion, but we can always amend it.
Yes, we intend to plan or put one at the schools.
So the schools agreed to place one there?
So I'll amend the motion to also say, to permit the placement of one at the schools based on where the schools decide to put it.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to permit the placement of these bins. As indicated, I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Is Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. So when do you think you'll be in a position to place the bins out there?
I would think within a month or so.
Terrific. Well, thank you very much for coming forward. Hopefully, this will help out, and look forward to learning more about how successful it is down the road.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
Okay, is Chief's of Fire on?
He is.
He is?
There he is.
Okay.
You figured it out.
We had to rig this up because I can't get in through the computer, so.
I'm sorry. That's probably my fault. We've been having some major technical difficulties here. It was a test.
Don't worry.
So Chief's of Fire, you've come before the Board with the recommendation for appointing a new police officer?
Yes, absolutely. As the Board and Mr. Gazinski knows, we had an officer retire back in November, and we began the selection process. We started with a written police exam, and just to give you a little bit of background on that, I will brief. In addition to the written exam portion of the test, it also evaluates individuals' personalities as well as gives you a candidate insight report. So it kind of gives you a pretty good idea of the people that have taken the test, if they've successfully completed the test. We generate a list of candidates to participate in a abilities test that consists of a mile and a half run, a 300-meter sprint, push-ups and sit-ups. It's difficult because we're on purpose. We want the best qualified candidate to be able to deliver to the residents of town and appropriately do the job. On a side note, typically, we lose 60% of the applicants that take this test, and we've administered it four times today. Once the candidate completes the physical abilities test, they have to score in each of the four events in order to move forward. In the process, upon successful completion of the physical abilities test, the candidate is then asked to come in for an interview assessment. Once they've completed that, we do a thorough background on the individuals. And, you know, this has been, we've done a lot in the last couple of months trying to find the perfect candidate, and tonight I bring Ms. Kelly O'Dowd to the Board for consideration to be appointed as a full-time police recruit. And then we will, our plan is to bring her back once she successfully graduates the academy, which will be sometime in July. I believe it's July 25th. We're shooting for a March 1st start date. Ms. O'Dowd is a graduate of Millis High School, and she's currently a student at the University of Maine. She has a double major. She's right now in sociology with a concentration in crime law justice and the Spanish language. She's fluent in Spanish. She can read Spanish, and she can write in Spanish as well. In addition, on a side note, highly sought after because MBTA has offered her a job a couple of times now, but she's declined. She feels like she fits Millis in that this would be a department that she'd do well in. And I would respectfully ask the Board and Mr. Gazinski to consider the appointment of Ms. Kelly O'Dowd as a full-time reserve officer.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Gazinski?
Thank you. Based upon the recommendation of the Chief of Police, I would ask that the Board ratify my appointment of Kelly O'Dowd as a police officer for the Town of Millis, with the conditions as outlined.
I move that we-
Good questions.
Oops, sorry.
Oh, well, we can move it, but if there's any questions?
If I may say to the Board, Mr. Gazinski, I do have Ms. O'Dowd off to my right if you'd like to speak to her.
That would be delightful.
All right, I'm going to pass my phone on.
Hello?
Hello, how are you?
How are you?
So how come they let you in from Maine?
What did you say?
How come they let you in from Maine, but we couldn't get in from Maine?
Oh, I've been back since Thanksgiving.
Well, I tried to go to Maine, and they wouldn't let me in without a test, so.
Really? Yeah, it's a little longer than it was back in November.
Okay, well, so are you doing all the remote stuff? Is that the way this works?
That is correct.
And University of Maine acts? Which campus?
Oh, I go to Orano.
Orano.
Which is the main campus, yes.
Which is right around the corner, right over the border. Not?
Yes, I'm pretty far up there.
Pretty far up there, right?
Which border are you talking about?
With Canada, right? Well, congratulations. Why, maybe you could just share with the Board, you know, just generally, what is your goal here of seeking to be appointed as a police officer here in Millis?
Well, I've lived in Millis all of my life. I left to obviously go to school in Maine. So I left, I missed it very much, came back home, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to work here because I love this city, and I look forward to spending these next upcoming years, learning how to be the best police officer that I can for the town.
Terrific. How many push-ups did you do?
During the test, I believe I did around 15 or 18.
Okay. Won't ask you how fast you ran the mile and a half, but that's okay. This is not a mile and a half walk, right?
Nope, it's a run.
Other questions from the Board members that are a little bit more useful than ones I've given?
My first comment would be, you've met Chiefs of Fire, you've known him for a while, and you know Millis, and you still decided you wanted to work here.
Absolutely, I love it here.
Well, I'm going to tell you right now, you've got one of the best chiefs you'll ever find.
I realize that.
Yes. So you're a double major.
That is correct.
You have a fluency in Spanish. Have you ever thought about other uses for your fluency there?
I actually have had the opportunity to be able to use it multiple times. I traveled to Spain where I got to learn there and communicate with the people there. I've also had the opportunity of volunteer interpreting for the Wolf and Police Department where my father works.
Ah, I was just going to get to, and do you have anyone else in the family? And you've answered that question. Well, I think it's terrific, so congratulations. I have no further questions. I'm just very pleased that someone with your talent is willing to stay in Millis.
Thank you very much.
Questions from, Mr. Underhill, you have any questions, or would you like to make the motion?
I can try that again. I move that we approve the Town Administrator's appointment of Ms. O'Dowd as a police officer.
Second?
Yes, thank you.
Well, that will be subject to the completion of the physical, the psychological evaluation.
Yes, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the Town Administrator's appointment. I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Is Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, and thank you very much for stepping forward. We look forward to working with you over the years as one of the finest officers for the Town of Millis. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'll have better technology next time, I promise. I don't know what happened. For all we spend on you, I mean, you can't hold it still. I mean, golly.
All right, folks, you have other people waiting to do business. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief. Sorry about that.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the hearing on the Tangerini's alcohol license. Ms. Burey?
I do see Linda is here, the Shirizios. Both of you are here, sorry. And they are here, as you know, Tangerini's is our local farm in town, well-loved by our community, and they do a lot of different events, and they've been doing one-day alcohol licenses for some amount of time, and with great success, I believe. And they are now coming to the Board looking for approval of an all-alcoholic beverages license so that they can do more of these events and, I think, more things on a regular basis. So I will let them, I think you have to open the hearing first here for them, and then we can move forward.
So I will make a motion that the Board open the hearing for the all-alcohol license for Tangerini's Farm.
Second?
So it's been moved and seconded to open the hearing. I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Is Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. McCaffrey, the hearing is open.
And Mr. McCaffrey, I just wanted to include that in your, in the Board's packet, I just gave a little bit of information. There is a lot of information that they need to provide, or anybody needs to provide when they apply for an alcohol license. They did check all the boxes. We always make sure that everything has been submitted properly before we bring it to the point of a hearing. But you will notice, I know Linda or somebody did a sketch of their seating arrangements and where they're possibly planning to have alcohol, so you can look at that. And then Linda, maybe you could speak more to what you're really looking for for hours, or how often this would be, that type of thing.
First, don't judge myself. It's the-
I thought, I thought it was very well done. Well, excuse me, woman. Linda, I think you're kind of quiet. I don't know if you're, can you get closer to your, sorry?
I can ask-
Oh, that's, that's a little better. Oh, that's, that's a little better.
Basically, what we're going to do is to expand on what we've in the past two years with our, where we've had last year, if I did my math correct, we did about 21 dates. And at this point, continuing on at that rate would be much more cost-effective if we just applied for the full license. Reception here at the farm has been really good with the single day permits. We are not intending to be sitting here this isn't something that we're, with our one alcohol situation, the legalism kind of situation.
Abu in an hour is nine to three. Nine.
Our main intention is, like Steve just said, nine to three on most, on most days, primarily during the weekends and occasionally some weekdays during the, during the summer season. And we have it for events for people that are looking to host a, we've had some bridal showers, we've had some baby showers, we've had graduation parties here in the past, and usually one of the first questions is, can we bring alcohol? Can we do alcohol? You know, for some of them, we've said, yes, you can. Need to then, you know, have all these steps in place to do it. And, and it means typically we're having to plan about a month out for these events that we can make it to one of the select board meetings and whatnot. And if we move forward, the liquor license, we don't have to plan that.
Sorry to interrupt in the middle, Mr. McCaffrey? You are, there's an incredible amount of feedback coming from you, Mr. McCaffrey. Do you have something going, is something going on in the background there? It's very hard to hear. But when I mute you, you're okay.
It's a party down here, it's a constant.
I don't know if you have another device that's near it or something? I'm not sure why it's happening.
I think if everyone mutes other than the speaker, it might end the feedback. You can try that.
It's specifically Jim, and I don't know what he's, I don't know why. There must be something else in his room that's, sorry to be interrupting in the middle. I keep getting complaints, people like, I can't hear. But see, when he's, when he's off, is anyone getting feedback? Because I'm not now. We're having major Zoom trouble today. Today's a bad Zoom day.
So anyway, so yeah, this would be something that we would be, we would be using primarily during our, our normal breakfast lunch hours for serving, serving a select number of cocktails, beer and wine, and then the farm-to-table dinners that we've done in the past. You know, knock on wood, hopefully we can continue with those this year, and in the past, and we've always applied for some of those. So at this point, we wouldn't have to be applying for, for those single day permits anymore.
I do think you have to, for the ABCC lists the hours of operation, so even if you don't always serve until 10 o'clock, you should probably put 10 o'clock or whatever the board decides agrees to, that's a reasonable time, because they will ask that. They'll want to know. So just as an FYI.
I can't remember if there was somewhere in that packet that it specifically asked it or not.
Usually, usually the board will vote, excuse me. The board will vote what the hours are, then I submit that, and then that's what the ABCC will look at, whatever the board votes for the hours.
Yeah, I would say, I would say 10 o'clock the end all. Where I find the table dinner, you can sit down, go around, or 10 at the latest. So, and we live here, I don't need a party going on in my backyard.
Well, I, I'm sure that, your neighbors would appreciate that as well, so. But I leave that to the board. Obviously, that's the board's discretion as to what they want to vote for the hours.
Well, I think the most important thing is to understand what the applicant would like the hours to be, and then we can work from there. So is it noon to 10, or is it 10 to 10? Or what is it that would be the best for your, for your business?
In a, in a perfect world, I would say nine to 10, just because our breakfast seating starts at nine, and for the, for the single day permits that we did started at
So 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, right? Okay. And the good news is, right, this is an experiment that has worked out very well for you folks, right? I mean, it's, you've been open quite a bit that way, but it turned out to be quite a success, right? Did I lose them?
No, I think they said yes, but I saw lips moving, but I didn't hear. We're having all these issues.
All right, we're doing our best.
We need an interpreter tonight, I apologize.
So it has been successful. You can give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
I think it's been great this time.
And I only raise it because, you know, it's been a very difficult time for everybody, for businesses, for residents, and it's, we have a story through all of this. I certainly am in favor of trying to support that business as much as we can, within reason. So, that said, I'll ask the other members of the board, do they have any questions they'd like to pose?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, any, anything from the company? Not the company, from the, the folks listening in? All right, so there's no further testimony. So what we will do is we will then adjourn the hearing and then vote on the application. So I make a motion that we adjourn the hearing on the liquor license for Tangerini's.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, I'll poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. So now, if there's no further discussion, we take a motion with respect to granting the application for all alcohol license.
Mr. Jermaine? We grant Tangerini's Spring Street Farm Incorporated Doing Business as Tangerini's Spring Street Farm an all, what is, what do they call it? An all-time liquor license?
An all alcohol. All alcohol liquor license, yes.
Yeah. Restaurant, all liquor, all alcoholic beverages and on-premises liquor license application.
Second.
And, and for the hours to be, sorry?
For the hours to be 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. I'll poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And motion is carried unanimously. So thank you very much to the folks running the farm. We look forward to many, many happy years of breakfast, lunch, and dinner at the farm. Do people come at 9:00 and never leave till 10? Is that the way, is any of that happening?
That's what we do.
Well, you do some spectacular jobs, so it's great.
Great, thank you.
And happy birthday, Linda.
Yes, happy birthday, Linda.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Next item on the agenda is review and approve the response letter with respect to the Gateway Local Initiative Project for 232 to 248 Main Street. We have information provided to us by Mr. Weiss. Mr. Weiss, are you on the call? See your name, it's in bold print here, so you must be.
Bob, you're muted. There you are.
Can you hear me now?
I'm telling you, this is a struggle.
We, we've had a tough day with-
This has been par for the course tonight, sorry. I think you can go ahead, Bob.
Okay, well, at, at our last meeting, we had presented a letter, draft letter in response to the applicant's request for a, for affordable housing at 232, 248 Main Street, and the, the board wanted to review the letter and have the letter rewritten, and, and so this is it. And this is the letter that we are submitting to, that we propose to submit on behalf of the board to be signed by the, the chair, and it will be delivered to the Director of the Housing Division of DHCD.
If I get unmuted, then I'll actually be able to say that again. We have a copy of the letter in the material that has been provided with the changes that we were looking to have made, which is basically supporting the applicant with some comments about some agreements that have been made by the applicant to mitigate some of the impacts. So there's questions for the board. I believe that Mr. American is also on the call. I saw his name pop up.
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Maybe you could, just from the point of view of the developer, indicate whether you believe that this letter is something that the developer is comfortable with?
I haven't seen it.
Well, then, it'd be harder for you to make a comment on that, I suppose.
It would, yeah.
Okay. So we just won't worry about that. Karen, can you just pull it up on the screen, perhaps?
I can. Hold on one minute, let me share the screen here.
We're trying the new virtual letter concept, Dan.
I like it.
Everything's virtual.
I mean, basically, the letter is, is indicating, you know, support for the project, and it, you know, does provide some commentary on some of the issues that we discussed before. But I would like you to get the opportunity to look at it. And while you do that, I would ask if other members of the board have any questions that they would like to address while Mr. American is reviewing the letter.
Can you see it better? A little bit, Dan?
Yeah, I can see it.
Well, then I'll scroll down a bit so everyone can read it a little bit, Mr. Weiss.
I thought this version sounded, sounded good, based on our conversation last time.
Yes, I agree. I think it reflects the comments that the board had made. Mr. Jermaine?
I feel comfortable with this.
Okay.
It looks good to me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, I appreciate the consideration.
A little bit more at the bottom.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have the letter. Any further comments?
We do just need to, there's just a spelling tweak in the first paragraph, but other than that, we're good.
Oh, consensus?
Is it, Aaron, is that consensus rather than?
Yes, I guess that didn't get corrected. Economic Development Development Director. I'll add the L.
Planning, planning director, yes.
I'm sorry, where?
The L is left off.
No, yeah.
In planning.
Sorry, I'm not trying to be a stickler, just want to make sure I said it.
Oh, yes, I see, I see it now.
Ms. Underhill had, had mentioned that before, and it's, the letters gone back and forth a few times without anybody-
Well, we, we can certainly recognize the fact that we've been asking the Economic Developer, Development Director to be panning for gold in them, our hills. But I know we take this a little different. Okay, so with that one change, should I take a motion from the board to accept the letter as written?
I move that we accept the letter to the Division of Housing Development as written.
Second. Department of Housing Community Development and Division of Housing Development.
Right. So it's been moved and seconded that the board report the draft of the letter to the Division of Housing Development and the Department of Housing Community Development, and direct the board chair to sign on the board's behalf. I'll poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much for working with us, Mr. Weiss and Mr. American, and we have to get this letter in by when?
This should go in the end of the month. So if you want to get it in by next week, that would be fine.
We get the chair to go down and sign it, that'd be good.
We'll leave the door open.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Next item on our agenda, we have several items brought to us with respect to contracts that have been pursuant to proposals solicited by the Department of Public Works. The first of these is review and approval of the tree removal contract. So, Mr. McCaffrey, are you still on?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So these next four articles were all voted on at the Novembertown meeting and approved by the, the residents of Millis. First is the tree removal. It's a, a contract Pathfinder, and that's to do the work under the direction of the DPW and the tree warden. The first, we were going to start, after taking much look at where we were going to start, we've decided we're going to start on Orchard Street, going up Ridge Street towards the, the Oak Grove Farm. You know, we weren't able to take those down as part of what they, when they went for extra funding. But they're all on Ridge Street, and they need to be taken down. So that will be the first row we're going to start, and then he's going to move to Middlesex Street. And I forget the, it's not on the list, but the tree warden will have a DPW worker with him, and we will take care of that work, as outlined at town meeting.
So we appropriated the $40,000 at the town meeting, and this is the contract to execute basically the tree removal based upon the appropriation in November. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, questions from the board? I guess from my perspective, this is exactly what we'd asked you to do. And do we have a sense here? I can't see it because it's, I didn't read it. Is there a start date on this, or?
Actually, he wanted us to start two weeks ago, so he's ready to go. I don't think there's a date on there, but he, he's ready to start. And this is the best time for him to do it, where there's no leaves on the trees and the weather for the next couple of weeks. And we're going to get a little snow, but nothing that's going to be able to stop this machine.
Yeah, I mean, we are really lucking out here, I think, in terms of being ready, having to fight two feet of snow, so. Okay, I would take the motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman? I'll move that we award contract to Pathfinder Tree Services LLC for the removal of trees specified by the DPW director in the amount, amount of $40,000, or should I say, not to exceed $40,000.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to award the contract for tree removal to, I can't see it because it's-
Pathfinder Tree Services LLC.
Pathfinder Tree Services LLC in an amount not to exceed $40,000. I'll poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Just as a reminder to folks, I mean, this is a great start, but there's still much work to be done, and we'll be see, we'll see how we can develop additional budgetary opportunities down the road, but at this stage of the game, we're very happy that the town would support at least this appropriation at this time. Okay, the next item is the award of contracts for the purchase of DPW vehicles.
Thank you. Karen, if you can scroll down a little.
Give me one second, here we go.
And I would ask if, these should be voted on separately because one's coming in with this week, and the other one's coming- week, and the other one's coming at a later date. So the first one is a 2020 Chevy Silverado. This was much discussed, again, at Town Meeting. This is an in-between of one of the very large dump trucks that we have, six-wheelers, and, you know, over the years, we've had, we've all had this discussion, you know, can we go a little smaller, and we believe that this is a good size for many of the developments that it'll be used on. So it does have a sander, just almost the exact size of what's on one of the bigger trucks, and a plow. This will be split between general, water, sewer, and stormwater, and that amount is And we do expect this truck to last a good 20 years. It's a brand-new style diesel engine, and I think Mr. Weiss was happy with the specs on it, because it does conform with, you know, the up-and-coming, energy-saving type diesel engines. Both of these vehicles, I gave you copy of the letter, the MAPC, and they run the contract, and there's the extension memo is attached in your packet. So I would ask for the Town Administrator to be able to sign the contract for this. Do you want to do the, and the second one is for a Chevy Silverado pickup truck, and that will be used by the Water and Sewer Superintendent, you know, not just solely for him, I mean, it will be used during snow plowing season. There is a plow with it, and this will be split between water and sewer. We do use a snow plow to get into the wells down in the woods, so this vehicle will be used on water and sewer, cleaning out the stations and at the treatment facilities and wells. And that purchase is $44,022.11, and I know that Lisa did ask that you vote them separately, please.
Oh, Mr. McKay, you're muted.
McCaffrey this time.
McCaffrey, sorry.
I keep getting this notice saying I'm muted, and I'm just, anyway, as I was saying to myself, this is, these purchases are pursuant to our participation in the buying consortium for the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, so we're participants in that in order to get the best price for vehicles as well as some other things, so we're purchasing them pursuant to that. And I'm assuming, Mr. McKay, that the specs are the ones that we were looking for, right?
Absolutely is.
Okay, so questions from the board on either one of these?
I have no questions.
No questions? Okay. All right, so then, pursuant to the request from the department head, I would look for a motion with respect to the 2020 Silverado Chevy Silverado SD 108 SD, four-by-four dump truck, in the amount of $108,000. Well, why don't I just make the motion?
I'm so moved.
A lot of $108,585.50. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the board to approve the purchase of the 2020 Chevy Silverado, a four-by-four dump truck with plow and sander in the amount of $108,585.50. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Second item is with respect to the, I'll make the motion, with respect to the 2020 Chevy Silverado 2500 four-by-four pickup truck with plow, in the amount of $44,022.11. Hold on just a second. I guess that we've been asked to actually vote for the source of the funding, so the vote is for the payment, and this amount is 50% from the water fund and 50% from the sewer fund. I'll go back and amend the other motion in a moment. So we have this motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. And then I'll go back, and I will amend the prior motion with respect to the dump truck to indicate that the payment, we'll move that the payment for the dump truck come from 25% from the general fund, 25% from the water enterprise, 25% from the sewer enterprise, and 25% from the stormwater enterprise funds.
Second.
So it's moved and seconded to amend the earlier motion. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Next item on our agenda, then, is with respect to a proposed contract with GCG Associates relative to infiltration study.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as this was, again, was approved at the November Town Meeting, the funds for this, and we, this is complying with our annual II studies that is good for the Charles, we give, we report back to the Charles River Pollution District, and we also report to the Mass DEP. It shows a good faith that the town is working on eliminating II. What is II? It's rainwater that's entering the sewer system, and it is being treated at the Charles River, which we're paying for that rainwater that should not be going in there. We've been very successful with that report, as you know, and the board's been very active in this II study that's gone on for the past 10 years, and we removed a good amount of the rainwater or surface water that enters the sewer system. Karen, if you go to the last page, I think that gives a better definition of the costs. I broke it down there.
Keep going down.
What this is, we've already started this. We started a couple of years ago, which, smoke bombing the sewers, and we found, we found several homes that had their drains, and they were, they had their sump pumps draining into the, into the sewer system, and, as we all know, that's illegal, and they were removed, and that's a great source of II that's removed.
Is this what you're looking for, Jim, or keep going down?
Yeah, keep going, I'm sorry. Right here.
Oh, I just missed it. Sorry about that. There with me. There we go.
So the only thing missing from this is the police details, we, where it's going to be, we're going to be doing smoke bomb testing. A lot of times, we will have, also, along with police details, we actually have a fire detail, because when people, you know, they don't, we notify everybody that these tests are going to be done, but a lot of people don't read the little doorknob stick holders that we put on. So we did carry $17,525 for those details. We don't expect to spend all that much, but, so that would be added onto that $87,980 for a lump sum of $96,805, but the contract itself, I hate to have you, I should have had it with me here, but the total amount of the contract, Karen, is that on the first?
It's 87,980.
Right.
You want me to go back to that one?
So the total contract on amount is $96,805, because on this, he doesn't show the police details. It's on the memo at the top of it.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, well, Karen's going back up, and we hope, as Mr. Jermaine can attest, we're looking.
There we go.
With the, yes, that's it. So what we're looking for to have, hopefully, you know, contractors maybe, you know, helping in this, these projects someday is II removal. But so the Town Meeting approved the $105,000, and that's, I would ask that we approve the whole amount of 105,775, $105,775.
And, Mr. McKay, when do we think the work will actually occur?
You whip this out to bid once he gets the award letter, and this is usually a springtime. During the summer, so it would start right away.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Underhill?
So, from the breakdown that Karen had put up on the screen, it was $87,980, but that didn't include the police detail, so we were, or fire detail, so we're looking at about 96. So are we doing a not-to-exceed 105,775 as?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think if you scroll down just a little, Karen, I think there's all, it gives the breakdown in the next, there you go.
There we go.
Yeah. But it still would be that not to exceed the amount of, that is what was appropriated at Town Meeting, because if we find something that they break a mandal cover or something like that, you know, the cost is going to have to be paid out of that, so we do have a little contingency there. I think it's like $9,000. Just.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes, Mr. Jermaine?
Just, when I add up 87,980 and 17,525, and my addition may be faulty, I come up with 105,505, so I'm off by $70.
Yeah.
Am I correct in that? Not that it's a big amount of money, but I just want to make sure we're accurate.
So I have 33,280, plus 66,000, 17,525 equals. I'm adding it up. Yeah, so let's keep that up there. 105,775.
Karen, can you get out to the, I'm sorry, all the way down to the bottom one?
Oh.
The breakdown of the last one.
Are you just going to typo if it's a, where's my mouse? There it is.
Right, that's right. So I left out, Pete, you're exactly right, I left out the 8,000, so if you add in that 8,000, the 79,000?
280.
Yeah, 79,280, plus 8,700, that's 87.
980.
Yep, and then you add the 17,525. That's the 105,05, so he is off his $70, right? Yeah, I don't know why he's off, he's off 70, in his addition, he's off the 70 bucks.
Okay, it's, it's not a big amount, I just want to make sure we're consistent.
And what I would do is I would make the vote on what he appropriated there, the 105,505.
Okay.
Well, at this point, the, I just want to understand the mechanics of the contract. GCG's contract is going to be for 87,980, right?
Correct, that's what the, for him and the subcontractor is.
So we're going to want to vote that contract.
Right.
And then, who's going to pay the details?
We do that, I do that, so you can.
So we need to authorize the DPW, then, to pay the detail. Is that right?
Correct, in the amount of 17,525.
Okay. So, that being said, I think I would, the motion I'd like to make is one that authorizes the Town Administrator to sign the contract with GCG in the amount of $87,980, but then authorize the Department of Public Works to spend up to $17,525 in police detail. And do you want other miscellaneous or just police detail?
I would put police and fire detail, if you could.
All right.
Please.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion that the board approve the contract with GCG for the II study work in the amount of not to exceed $87,980, and to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract on the town's behalf.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Then we'll make a motion that with respect to the II project, the DPW Director be authorized to spend up to $17,525 for police and fire details related to the II project work.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. Moving on to the next item we have on our agenda. This is the item relative to the meeting later this week with the tri-board group, the Board of Select, the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee. This is intended generally to be the first conversation regarding the upcoming budget discussion as well as other related items. First part of this will be conversation, a report back by the Finance Director with respect to the current fiscal year, the cash flow, where we stand in terms of collections and whatnot. As the board has indicated during the year, we've been monitoring closely this activity through the Town Meetings in May and November. We've appropriated a budget which we believe we would be able to fund based upon our best guesses of the economic situation, and this is an opportunity for us to continue to monitor that. Basically, we're going to be, as of the end of January, seven months into the year, so we'd ask the Finance Director to report back to us periodically on where we stand year to date, on collections as well as expenditures. So this memo really is a memo to the board, which will be shared with the tri-board as to where we stand for fiscal year 2021. So if the Finance Director's on, if she could just sort of walk us through this particular analysis so that we could, the board could understand where we stand so far this year.
Sure, I'm here. Thank you very much. So this is from our, the December 7th update that I gave to the board. The changes are in the local aid distribution. The FY 2021 Conference Committee, as of Friday, December 18th, voted for Millis to receive That's over our budgeted amount by $351,391. That is also up over the report that I gave to you December 7th by $81,000. So we're in really good shape there. As far as the real estate taxes go, we've collected for quarter one and two, 98.4% of the real estate taxes for that time period have been collected. During this time period, it was, it amounted to $61,000 in additional real estate taxes collected. I want to mention that the quarter three real estate taxes are not due until February 1st. So approximately 60% of our real estate taxes are escrowed by a third party and paid by a third party, so the payments are made on or a day before the scheduled due date, so we'll have more information the end of the. So we'll have more information, um, the end of the first week of February, um, but not in time for the tri-board. Um, marijuana impact fees remain the same as what I reported out in December. Um, motor vehicle receipts, we've had an additional collection of thirty-five thousand dollars since December seventh, um, bringing our collection rate to ninety-six point three percent for, um, motor vehicles for calendar year 2020. Um, today, the, uh, assessor's office is putting the commitment together for the first, um, commitment for excise tax for, uh, calendar year 2021. And, um, those invoices will be going out next week or the week after with a due date in March. Our new growth, there's no change in that, and the free cash, there's been no change in that. Um, all expenses are on track, so we're not seeing anything out of the ordinary. Um, right now, we're, Millis is in a really nice position. Anybody have any questions?
Uh, I'm just going to ask a couple of questions, particularly now that I've turned mute off. Um, just want to go back to the local aid number again for context.
Yep, yep.
Um, this year, the way we budgeted for local aid is the initial budget adopted in, uh, June of 2020, uh, was for, um, a reduced amount of local aid from prior year, a five percent reduction, which led us to make some reductions in service and et cetera, et cetera. Um, so the three hundred and fifty-one dollars, three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, um, it's more than, is it more than we had anticipated back in November as well?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the FY 2021 local aid, uh, increase of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is above and beyond the number that we utilized when we looked at the, these numbers back in November?
That's correct. We used, um, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
Okay, so I want to ask the question again. Um, three hundred and fifty-one thousand is more than we anticipated we would get. Well, I'm going to ask about the dates you have here. I'm sorry to be too spun. Based on the information from DOR on the eighteenth of December.
Which was the final, uh...
Which is the final number.
Right, for FY 2021.
Which is not a number that we had back in November.
Correct.
Um, the number that we used back in November for purposes of creating the expenditure, expense budget did not include the three fifty-one. Is that right? Three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars?
It in, it include, it didn't include the total three hundred and fifty-one thousand. It included two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. At the time that we did this in November, uh, every indication was that they were going to balance a level fund FY 2020, um...
Yeah.
Twenty-one to FY 2020 levels. Uh, they're actually going to fund more than that for 2021.
So that's what I was trying to get at. So the number you mentioned, which is the eighty thousand dollar delta.
Right.
That's eighty thousand dollars that we did not expect, nor did we appropriate back in November.
Exactly right.
So all things being equal, um, that would ultimately roll over into free cash, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So that's good news in the sense that we have a little bit more, uh, than we thought. Uh, but I don't want people to think that we have three hundred and fifty-one thousand more than we thought.
Exactly.
The collection rates seem to be holding up reasonably well. This is the rate, and, and I, the last few times we've asked the treasurer, this percentage of collection seems to be comparable to prior years. Is that still the case as far as you know?
Yes, that's true.
So we don't seem to see any fall-off in the real estate tax collection. Uh, doesn't make it easy for folks, but it certainly is not something that we've seen falling off.
That's correct.
Now, the marijuana money is for half the year.
That's correct.
So in theory, when we get to the, and this money again is not money we've appropriated... Well, hold on a second. What, if any, of this have we appropriated?
We have not appropriated any of this money.
Any of it?
All the free cash for the fall.
Thanks to our friends from the DOR, we were unable to anticipate this, um, because of what they believed was insufficient history to be able to reasonably judge it, which I guess I understand, but didn't, we didn't like that much, and we pushed back and we didn't get anywhere. So this is, um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more money than we had projected in terms of revenue, right?
That's correct.
And assuming that it holds up for the second half of the year, it's going to be another three hundred and fifty thousand.
That would be true.
So there's going to be seven hundred thousand dollars here of marijuana money that we will have not been able to appropriate and which theoretically somehow rolls into free cash, although I don't know how the HCA works there because that's supposed to be earmarked for impact payments.
We're, uh, we're actually tracking that, and so we know what that number is all the time and what we've expended the money on. So we have it separated out in a spreadsheet.
So that's a, that again is a positive thing for us in terms of the, it's what we had hoped for, what we had planned for, it's just that we haven't been able to take advantage of it presumably at some point. Do we have any idea for purposes of, you know, I mean, tri-board is the beginning of creating, you know, working on budget 2022. Do we have any idea whether the DOR is going to give any leeway here to be able to actually project marijuana, marijuana money for purposes of the 2022 budgeting process?
Uh, we do have indication. I received it last week. Um, uh, they are saying to, uh, only budget what you will have received by the time the recap comes through for next year. Uh, with that anticipation, I would expect that we could use, in this year's budget, we should be able to use one hundred and seventy-five thousand six twenty-eight toward our budget. Uh, we're only able to use the marijuana impact in our budget.
Okay. At some point, this gets to be a lot of money that you can't appropriate.
Right. Well, I think that in future years, um, people have to realize that, um, the first sale for marijuana in Millis was November of, um, you know, last year. So that's why we're only, we haven't, we just had one whole year running. It would not, not experience when it came to budget time to be able to project out realistically.
Well, we did offer to allow, if they could allow us to even budget half of it, it would be helpful, but they wouldn't even allow that. Okay, I don't mean to beat this up, but I just want to make sure that I understand it as well. Motor Vehicles is telling us that people are still buying cars, right?
Yes.
Can you speak a little bit about the new growth number? Which is much higher than we thought than we, and, and that's because of?
Well, the new growth number, um, went up, um, more than we thought that, uh, when we originally, uh, set the budget for FY 2021, um, I believe at the time, there were only four actual sales at the Glen Ellen, uh, construction site, um, net and that were completed. Uh, since that time, uh, a lot more, uh, construction's gone on there so that there's a lot more value in that particular property than there were before. And so now we're able to put them on the tax rolls because of...
Yeah.
The, um, parcels have sold and now have become a hundred percent taxable. So that, that's really the big growth, that and Acorn Place. Um, we should experience, uh, not, I wouldn't anticipate as large a growth coming fiscal year, just to be, um, on the conservative side. Um, we'll use a five-year average to come up with what we should use for, uh, new growth for next year. And that, again, it will be conservative, but at the same time, uh, realistic.
Okay, on that one, yeah, I think that, um, yeah, I hear you. I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand why it's prudent. Um, I'd just like us to do maybe a little bit more homework on, you know, closings at this site because there's a lot of them. Um, and we have the, the work over, over Acorn Place where we have quite a number of new units also going up. Um, there were fifty-five units, which, you know, are in the ground and sold, so I, I, I think that...
I did talk to the assessor about this, and so, um, she was the one who gave me the, uh, figure, uh, for us that I used in the, um, budget, uh, projected numbers for revenue for this year.
Yeah.
We certainly can talk about it. She feels very comfortable with using a five-year average versus something similar to what we actually saw last year.
Yeah, well, I mean, that may be, she may be comfortable. Anyway, I, I think it's a matter that as long as we all understand what it is, what it's telling us, and what is reasonable, um, then we can, you know, start to understand that number. But from the point of view of, you know, longer term, certainly the real estate development continues to be strong. Um, not even accounting for the projects that we've been dealing with in terms of, you know, disturbed land disturbance and sewer and water entry fees and whatnot, because there's still quite a bit of that going on. I realize that's years down the road, but it's still out there. Um, and, you know, we haven't seen this kind of new growth in our town in a long, long time, if ever. So I want to make sure that we're realistic without being overly conservative, that's all. But it's, it's grounds for conversation rather than trying to get anything out of it tonight. Um, okay, um, any comments, thoughts, questions from my colleagues on, on the board? The gentleman in front of the control? No?
No.
No comments.
No comments? Okay.
You've gone through it pretty thorough, vetting of the...
Agreed.
Okay. All right, so, uh, again, this is something that, uh, you know, is, then gets folded into spreadsheets and whatnot for purposes of projecting revenue as we go into the budget cycle. Um, and I just, from the board's point of view, want to be sure that the little group that's working on trying to come up with some suggestions for the future allocation of revenue, you know, is developing some spreadsheets and whatnot, but utilizing these numbers starting from the same basis. Um, so we'll hear more about that a little bit more on Thursday. Um, so any other comments, thoughts? I wanted to spend a minute on the agenda for the meeting on Thursday to make sure the board members were aware of what conversation is going to be. That agenda came out under separate cover. Find it. We don't. Um, this was the conversation that I had with the chair of the school committee and the chair of the finance committee. Um, there's a draft agenda, uh, which will have to be posted tomorrow. So if there's anything that the board members would like to comment on tonight, that'd be fine. Um, the intent here is to get the financial update that we just, uh, heard and then have conversation from both the school department and the municipal side, just a broad overview of where we stand and what kinds of things we would like to see, and then what we're working on in terms of future costs for FY 22. Um, we did this last year at the very high level, at least it gave some flavor to folks as to what we're working on. Um, and then we're, we're going to spend some time on the revenue projections. Uh, the finance director is in the process or has been working on a five-year projection, revenue projection, just like we've done in the past, that's just updated. Um, I think Carol, if it's possible, sooner or later, if you could share that with the other board members, the five-year projection?
Sure.
So that they have it well in advance of the meeting. I think that's going to be provided to the other people on the, in the committee as well, but, but if you could just, I mean, a part of our budget process that we have implemented over the last several years is the creation of this five-year revenue projection, which gets embedded into the budget document and becomes context beyond a single year. So, um, are you feeling that we're in decent shape there in terms of creating that five-year projection?
I, I already have it, um, done, and I can, um, I'll put it at a summary level, uh, for the tri-board meeting rather than the detailed level that I had, um, sent off earlier.
Okay.
It's easier for people to look at a summary level.
Okay.
And so that'll be ready for the tri-board, and I will send it off to all the committee chairs.
Okay, and I want to make sure the board members have it as well, so that they're well aware.
I'll send it out. Do you want me to send it to the select board first and then have you look at it, and then I'll send it out to the boards or chairs?
Um, I don't, I don't, that's not, you know, you can send it to the other board members and then send it to the rest of the folks too. I mean, we're not trying to hide anything here. I like to get the information out, that's all.
Oh, no, I, I understand. I just want to be sure I follow the right process, that it goes to the chair of the committee and then that person disseminates it?
Oh, yes.
Right.
We are, we are corresponding among committee chairs.
Okay.
It's not our, and, and if they ask us, if they would prefer that we send it out that way, that's fine, but I mean, we want to respect the fact that the chair of each of the groups is, you know, setting the agenda and distributing the information.
Right.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, one last thing, and, you know, in terms of, uh, the meeting, you know, we will be talking a little bit about, at the broadest level, any pending warrant articles. Um, the reason I bring that up tonight is, of course, that if any of these things occur, such as the conversation that we had, uh, in our executive session, um, you know, that could trigger a warrant article, but we may be premature to discuss it, um, at this meeting coming up. In any event, um, Mr. Jermaine, can I ask questions?
Yes. The one thing I don't see in here is any review of the capital planning. And the reason I bring that up is it's good to see revenue projections, but it's also, and revenue sharing, but it's also important as part of, if you will, revenue sharing for everyone to review, here are the things that the capital planning committee has itemized up to this point and prioritized. And my feeling is that ought to be a portion of this discussion in light of how we distribute or might distribute, uh, funding or recommend funding for various projects.
Um, I, yeah, I think you're probably right. I, the, the capital planning committee had its first meeting, uh, last Thursday of the new cycle. So it's just beginning to, uh, collect the capital requests. So we could, I could ask them to produce what they have, or we could wait to the next meeting. Um, I don't anticipate any decision this week on revenue sharing. I think we're moving the ball forward, but I, if, if, with your permission, I will check with the chair. If he feels something is ready for prime time, I'll ask him to share it. Otherwise, I'll ask him to make a commitment to share it at the next, next tri-board meeting and invite them to the meeting as well. Um, I don't think there's any reason why we can't share what we got, so why don't I ask him to do that?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that's sort of the plan. Any, hopefully, um, this will be a good lively discussion, conversation. A lot of work's already gone into it in terms of, you know, creating the numbers. I, thanks to the finance director and her team for putting this stuff together. It's very helpful. Um, I do think, you know, there are some substantive issues here that we, as a board, are looking to raise, um, because we feel as though there's some things that maybe need to be addressed as part of this process in terms of developing community needs and perhaps changing needs of our community. Um, so hopefully, we will have some good discussion there. Um, none of that conversation has been, um, although, as in meeting, I have tried to make folks aware of the fact that the board feels as though there may need to be some prioritization here prior to revenue sharing being developed. Um, that has not been resolved. It's on the table. It was on the table last year. It'll be on the table this year. And I think as a board, I think we're committed to try and reach some agreement on this rather than just defaulting. and reach some agreement on this rather than just defaulting back to the old methodology. So I do think it'll take a little bit of time and effort, continue to take time and effort so that we have an outcome that we feel as though we can support and the community can support as well. Okay. So that's the discussion. Thanks for that. Uh, I wanted to make sure the board was aware of it. Again, this is a conversation that is among all the members of these three bodies and all, all members of the board are encouraged to participate and give your views, et cetera, because if we don't put out the issues, then we're never going to resolve them. So thank you for your patience. Speaking of resolution, I'll now move to the next item on the agenda, um, which I'm not going to go into as excruciating detail and describing, which is PFAS litigation. Um, Mr. Gesinski has something to present to us. I would just note, if I did attend the workshop, uh, at the MMA meeting on water issues, uh, I don't know if anybody else attended that or not, or, um, it seems to me that there is no room for argument with the DEP. They have their 20, 20 parts per trillion and they're rolling it out. Um, and they do have some money available for grants and whatnot and we need to be sure we get our share of them. Clearly way short of what will be required by communities across the Commonwealth to deal with this, um, based upon the information that we received from our consultants and from our DPW director. Um, we've been fortunate to get some grant money, but no one's talking about of the scope that we fear we may have to, you come up with. Um, anyway, um, I don't know. The head bobbing from Ms. Underhill indicated she listened to it as well. Um, I don't know if I'm standing it wrong, but.
I'd say that's pretty accurate.
Yeah, it was not very encouraging, I must say.
I listened to them before. I would like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we think about putting a letter together to our state reps.
Yeah.
Identifying the issue and the cost that we're likely to bear as a burden on the town. Um, if they feel that this is what is required for our safety, so be it, but it's coming in a very awkward time for us and at least we need to get that in front of our reps and they understand that they have committed us to something that's going to be very expensive for our town at any rate.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that's a good idea. So maybe we can work, Mr. Gesinski, you can be on point, help us develop correspondence, certainly going into the next legislative session. I mean, let's, and the timing is appropriate given the fact that the, you know, all the municipalities in the Commonwealth got that reinforced, um, at the MMA meeting as to where the DEP's head was on this stuff. So, um, that doesn't mean we don't want to proceed with the litigation, which is really a funding source with respect to the polluter. I mean, we are the polluted in this case. Uh, um, anyway, without going on any further, Mr. Gesinski, perhaps you can chart us, uh, where we stand on this contract for the PFAS litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you mentioned, as a follow-up to the board's last meeting where attorney Sammon had come before the board to discuss the consolidated litigation for PFAS and had asked the board to consider joining, um, that on behalf of the town. Um, we did have our town council review the agreement, um, which he did. Attorney Jay Talman, um, basically came back and said that the only section that he was concerned with in the agreement was section 7C, which has since been, um, uh, adjusted in a way that addressed the concerns that attorney Talman had. Um, so that updated agreement with the change to section 7C was in your packet and, um, uh, that has been approved as deformed by attorney Talman. And I recommend that the board vote to approve, uh, execute the agreement. Uh, I think this is an opportunity for the town to possibly get some funds, uh, back or as you had mentioned by the polluters, uh, to help address, uh, the remediation that we're going to be forced to, to undertake, uh, by the new DEP regulations.
Mr. McCaffrey, I muted you again. I'm sorry.
You're working very hard to keep me quiet. That's good.
I know. It's just, I don't know why you're having so much feedback, but you're having a ton of feedback from your particular thing.
I've got another computer going because I'm so tech savvy.
So sorry about that.
Nice. Anyway, any questions from the board?
Um, I don't have any questions. I'm satisfied that, you know, our, our attorney's gone through it and there's been, you know, applicable edits. I see no reason not to move forward with it.
I have no concerns.
So I would take a motion to, uh, approve the execution of this agreement. Are you going to sign this, Mr. Gesinski?
I would be happy to if the, uh, the board authorized me to do so.
Okay. So why don't we have a motion of that effect?
Okay. I move that we, um, approve the PFAS litigation agreement and authorize the town administrator to sign on the town's behalf.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town administrator to sign on the town's behalf, contract with special counsel with respect to PFAS litigation. I'll call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. So at this point though, I mean, what we're doing of course is we've talked about potentially looking for some legislator help in funding, find some funding for mitigation of PFAS. We're looking to enter litigation against a company that manufactures this stuff over the years. And I believe as Mr. McKay indicated to us the last time, we're also pursuing, uh, some potential relief for the owner of the, uh, GAF property based upon some potential, uh, sites for pollution from there as well. Um, so these are not mutually exclusive, but, uh, we're trying, you know, every other avenue in addition to the Water Enterprise Fund to find ways to fund for the mitigation that we're going to have to, uh, implement. Okay. So the next item I have on the agenda here tonight is the review and approval of the town's social media policy. This is a proposal brought forward by Mr. Gesinski and Ms. Underhill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so in your, uh, in the board's packet is the social media policy. It is unchanged, um, essentially since your last meeting. Uh, it has been reviewed by town council, um, and approved as deformed. Uh, we did have positive feedback, um, from the department heads, uh, that we contacted, uh, specifically the department heads that actually have, um, social media accounts and operate those, um, on behalf of the town. Um, and, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have and want to take the opportunity to thank, um, Selectwoman Underhill for all her work on putting this together and, uh, gathering the information, um, to, uh, present this to the board.
Uh, thank you. I think that, uh, that fulfills the question I had as to whether or not the other board, uh, I'm sorry, the department heads were comfortable with the policy. It sounds like they are. So it looks like we're, uh, in pretty good shape that way. We also have in our packet some other components of what is more the more universal social media policy as it relates to, uh, not only the social media sites maintained by the town, but also any activity by town employees on social media, whatever, whatsoever. We have a policy relative to boards and committees and their also participation in social media. This is not the town's social media, but as they are participating in social media sites outside of the ones maintained by the, by the town. And then we do have the overarching policy for the town's municipal Facebook page, uh, which was implemented in April of 2020. So, um, we have a little bit more comprehensive approach now. This, this piece was an important missing piece from my perspective, which is now something I believe we're ready to, ready to move forward on. So questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I find this a very comprehensive and well-thought-out policy at this time. Obviously something can be amended over time, but I'm very pleased with what I see. It's much more comprehensive than I thought we'd have an opportunity to have the very first go around. So my congratulations to my colleague, Ms. Underhill.
Thank you. Ms. Underhill?
Uh, I did just want to note that I had contacted the town of Acton, who, um, this is based off of, um, and I actually haven't heard anything back at this point, but if I hear any, um, specific feedback from them on their own policy, um, in terms of any changes that they would have made, we can have a future discussion.
Very good. Yes, I think, you know, there's always an opportunity for amendment. Um, I, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Germain, that perhaps the act on this now fills a gap for us. Um, and so I, I would be in favor of moving forward with it as well. So I would take a motion to that effect.
I move that we propose to enact the social media policy as presented here, uh, for the town of Millis. Um, I don't think there's anything more in there that I could say.
Second?
So it's been moved and seconded from the board to adopt the social media policy relative to the operation of, uh, social media, uh, sites, uh, maintained by the town of Millis. Um, I will call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Uh, I would, I would ask, uh, in addition, um, over the next little while, if possible, um, that the town administrator organize a little bit of a, perhaps a training module on this so that we can share with all the employees, uh, ask them for any questions they might have so they understand what the policy is. And, uh, I think from my perspective, I'd like to see knowledge with it by all town employees that they've read this and agree to, uh, abide by it. It's just, you know, in terms of good record-keeping, I think it's important for us to do that.
So, well, we can, we can certainly do that. Um, set something up. I may have, uh, our town council assist us a little bit as far as, uh, setting up a training module and we'll make sure that the, uh, the actual policies, uh, get signed off as, as received and, and understood.
Very good. I think that's very wise. Okay. Um, next item on our agenda is board, uh, uh, committee liaison reports from board members for any board or, or committee meetings they may have attended since our last meeting. So, uh, I'll ask if my colleagues have anything that they would like to report on?
I have nothing, unfortunately. I didn't miss a meeting that was not possible for me to attend, but otherwise I have nothing to report.
Perhaps you were at prayer. It's terrible, isn't it? Karen?
Yes.
Put me back on mute.
I do, I do have, yes, I do have a report. Um, I listened in to the most recent school committee meeting. Um, they gave a few, um, sort of statistical numbers, I guess, on, um, COVID cases, uh, within the school. Um, there was, which is, it sounds fairly low at this point, but good. Um, they did have a discussion about expanding in-person learning, um, to four days for the younger grades, K through two. Um, and that if and when that is done, it would be rolled out a grade at a time, would be their plan. Um, there's still more discussion that has to happen with that, though. Um, they did talk about pooling testing for students, um, the testing pool so that if somebody in the pool tests, um, positive, then they, they test the, the group in quarantine as necessary. Um, they did note, the note that some of the challenges with, um, the teach, with staff and kids in school are the fact there are also children who are fully remote. Um, so in terms of, um, um, staffing, they would need, it would need to be, um, more assistance if more students were in person to also handle those that chose to remain remote. Um, they did discuss their, um, third draft of their budget. Um, they did note that their bus driver salaries were not covered by their revolving fund and at this point they're still reviewing their budget. It doesn't sound like they have, um, funds to cover bus salaries at this time. Um, they were looking at their total salary increase and budget increase. Um, they did have a discussion about, um, sticking, trying to get to a, a 4% number. So I know that was just their third, um, draft of the budget. Apparently they go through, um, multiple drafts of the budget. Um, the budget at this time that they had for that draft didn't include supports that would be needed for hybrid and remote learning, um, meaning extra staff and such. And the reason that came up in discussion was that it's kind of unknown as to, um, what's going to happen in the fall, what the timeline is in terms of, uh, making sure everyone's vaccinated. Um, so in the event, um, the fall did need to include, um, a hybrid or, or remote situation, um, that's something that would need to be factored in. Um, they did also discuss the mascot. Their next school committee meeting is going to be, um, a Zoom public forum. Um, anybody in the community, um, that wants to speak can get a time slot. Um, then the school committee will meet to discuss, um, that topic further after the, um, community, the public forum. Um, and then they just, they had a professional development day on the 19th. They did, um, a lot of work with diversity and bias training, um, bias in curriculum, race in the community, um, recognizing implicit bias. Um, so I, that sounds like a, a very, very worthy professional development day and a good topic to cover. So I just wanted to, um, that's, that's pretty much the overview of that last meeting. It was pretty, pretty full.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, there is one meeting that I did attend that I thought it was before our last select board meeting, but it turns out it was after and that was the enterprise committee meeting. We did discuss issues associated with PFAS and we discussed the sewer connection. The committee has agreed that we have to put together a presentation for discussion with the community to help people better understand the need for connecting to the sewers, the implications to everyone for not connecting to the sewers and how we're going to proceed in for the future and why this is going, we are recommending that it be a warrant article at the upcoming town meeting. Uh, we also discussed some of the PFAS situation, um, both the testing of water in town and for private wells. I will say that Mr. McKay was. I will say that Mr. McKay was very helpful in helping explain some of the PFAS testing that has been done and some of the ongoing discussions in that area. Those were the two primaries. There were other things to discuss. We will be having another meeting shortly. I can't encourage enough members of the communities to attend those meetings via Zoom because it is important to understand the implications of the sewer connections and what it means to our town and its ability to continue its growth. So those were the issues that were coming up at that time.
Okay, thank you. I can report on two committees very briefly on the capital planning committee. As I indicated earlier, capital planning began its FY '22 capital review process, just to kick it off really, update the documentation, begin to take a look at the budget requests that are coming from the departments because there are capital requests as part of the budget process. Of course, the hope is that many of those requests will have already been noted in the capital plan, because new ones are kind of undermining the whole purpose of the plan, which is to identify as much as possible and then just try to give them some prioritization. But in any event, nothing startling has come up yet, but that process again has just begun. I did discuss with the briefly with the committee potential for having the board, our board, be a little bit more aware of the prioritization methodology that the capital planning committee is using, and not that we necessarily have to do the same thing, but it may be worthwhile for us to look at the attributes as we go through our own prioritization, some of the attributes that they've identified in their efforts to try to prioritize across functions. So I will be sending out the to all to all our members the prioritization worksheet that we use so that you'll be aware of it, and we perhaps would want to speak to it a little bit more in our next meeting and even ask some questions about prioritization of capital needs as we attend our compartmental budget presentations in a couple of weeks. I think it's the 11th, right? Or whatever date it is, I can't remember now. What date is it?
Yeah, it's February 10th.
The 10th. So anyway, just for information purposes only, the second meeting of importance was the permanent building committee. The permanent building committee looked at two items. One is the TPW project. And maybe I can ask Mr. Gesinski to give a little update on where that stands because he did share some information with the board.
The, yeah, the actual TPW project, they've begun construction for the actual office building on site. I know Mr. McKay and I talked about that last week, and we're excited to see that that formal part of the construction kickoff as the board is aware. The DPW itself did a lot of the prep work on site, but the actual construction company is now working to prepare for the foundation in other parts of of the office building, the staff building on site.
Good, so we're underway is the good news. Second item that they had on their agenda was the report from their architectural consultant on the Lansing Millis Building, the train station. The the architect presented, the architectural consultant, or it's really a building restoration consultant, I guess, presented an extremely detailed analysis of the building, not only its current condition, but its history. It's really a report written from the point of view of preservationists as well as, you know, owner of a building and one of the uses that could be, this building could be put to. The task, of course, was to look not simply at creating municipal building, but also alternatives for the way the building might be used, public-private partnerships that might be employed to help fund the building renovation, you know, the whole gamut from rehab to sale of the building. I mean, that's kind of what was looked at. At the highest level, they looked at also various utilizations of that building in sort of commercial space, mixed-use space, perhaps office and restaurant or cafe on the first floor, even a residence. So looking at a lot of the options that might be available in the building. So it's it's really quite comprehensive and quite impressive. I'm going to ask that the members of the board be furnished with a copy of it. Concerned that the public is free to take a look at it as well. But it is expensive proposition, I guess, at the end of the day. That's that's part of the issue here. The building itself is a glorious, wonderful building and in need of significant rehabilitation to make it a building that is useful in the future. And that's pretty clear from the study, which looked at, you know, components of it, looked at just getting the building itself back in shape so that it'll stand for the next 130 years, which is an expensive proposition, looking at more practical costs related to making the building habitable, like window replacement and those kinds of things, also significant costs. And then it analyzes internal costs that you have to incur if you're going to reposition, repurpose the building itself once the exterior is secured and is in a position to be able to use in the future. And last but not least, looking at the site itself, what would have to be cleaned up, trying to fit these potential uses in the site, there's certainly a lot of work that would have to be done. So no resolution to this. I think it's, again, an excellent review of what the opportunities are as well as the challenges. More dialogue with the community clearly is going to be required to determine the ultimate disposition of this building, which is, if you take a look at the report, it really, you can tell the excitement of the consultant, the restoration consultant, on the potential for this building as well as its historical value. But that doesn't diminish the real cost that would have to be incurred in order to make this viable. So anyway, I just wanted to bring the board up to date on that because that was an important item discussed by that committee at its recent meeting.
Mr. McCaffrey? Did the permanent building committee publish that on their website, do you know? Well, you just muted yourself.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
I don't know if I was wondering if it's available to the public, if the permanent building committee had posted the the evaluation that was done by the architectural firm on the website, if anyone was interested.
I think we should follow up and see that it gets on the website.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. As long as you're okay with that, I think we should post that.
It's really an impressive piece of work, I have to say.
I would do that.
It was presented, at least the copy that I saw, as a draft, so it may be that they're finalizing it, but we can check with Mr. Clacco and the team to see where where they want to go on that. But I do think it's important to share with the community as thoroughly and completely as possible.
Agreed. Okay.
Okay. So the next item we have on our agenda.
Excuse me? The MOA ratification, I mean, the ratification of the SEIU.
Is the MOA ratification, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
For some reason, I'm down on this, but I think this is yours.
I'd be happy to take this, Mr. Chairman. This is just a formal ratification of the MOA to be executed with the SEIU, our union for the employees in the Veterans Memorial Building. As the board is aware, the COVID-19 pandemic has made it difficult for employees in the union to utilize their vacation time. This simply would allow them to carry over their vacation time to be able to use it up until this June 30th, which, as I mentioned to the board, I believe is a reasonable request from the union and just ask the board to vote to take the formal approval of the MOA.
All right, questions from the board? So I would take a motion to approve the execution of the MOA?
I move that we approve the execution of the MOA.
Second?
Moved and seconded for the board to approve the memorandum of agreement with the SEIU. Who's going to sign this?
I actually.
Town administrator?
Yes.
Well, it was already signed in executive session, or you approved it in executive session.
Right, right. Yes, I've already signed it. This is a formal ratification.
To ratify the MOA with the SEIU. Poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item is the library director's contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'd like to thank Selectman Underhill for being the central part of this negotiation on behalf of the board between the town and our library director, Kimberly Tolson. Ms. Tolson does an outstanding job as library director for the community, and we had a very good negotiation and the, we're asking at this time that the board vote to formally ratify a successor agreement between the Town of Millis and Ms. Tolson, which would be effective from the 11th day of January 2021 up until the 10th of January 2024. So I've asked the board for approval of that. Actually, I'll I'll change that time date. Actually, it's January 29th of 2021 and terminating January 28th of 2024. I'm going to ask the board to approve and formally ratify that agreement.
Okay. So again, we've looked at this before. This is a vote to ratify the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we ratify the agreement between the Town of Millis and Kimberly Tolson, the director of the library, for a period of January 29th, 2021 and terminating January 28th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the board to ratify the contract, contract with Kimberly Tolson, the library director, for the period of January 29th, 2021 to January 28th, 2024. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Next item we have is the worst commitment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I ask the board to vote to approve the stormwater commitment in the amount of $3,333. This is an annual commitment, and this is, this is in relation to the properties located at Jameson Drive. It was just a mistake in the in the in the mailing, and this is, we're just asking to have this adjusted for those properties.
Can you pull it up, Karen? I can't.
Sorry. Hold on a minute. Yes, they missed the one street when they sent it out originally.
You'll see the the memo from the the town's treasure collector. And the next one down shows the amount.
Is that what you want, Jim?
Yes, okay. All right, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
I was going to say, you recognize anybody at that address?
I recognize the street.
All right, well, I move that we approve the annual stormwater commitment in the amount of $3,333 for fiscal year 2021, and this is specific to Jameson Drive.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded to approve the stormwater commitment for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $3,333. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, I recuse myself. Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Next item is a water sewer commitment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a water sewer, a water and sewer commitment for October of 2020 in the amount of $4,990.94.
I'll move that we accept the water sewer commitment for October 2020 in the amount of $4,990.94.
Second.
So moved and seconded to accept the water sewer commitment for October 2020 in the amount of $4,990.94. I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, the agenda is select board minutes of the meeting of January 11th, which we received under separate cover.
Correct.
The members have the opportunity to review the minutes.
Do you have any comments?
Any comments? If I did review them, they look fine to me. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move that we approve the minutes for January, what was it? Hang on.
11th.
January 11th, 2021.
Second.
Removed and seconded for the board to approve the minutes of its meeting of January 11th, 2021. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
That concludes the public portion of our meeting, the open meeting. We began with an executive session but did not complete our work, so we will be going back into executive session for purposes of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, the SEIU contract. After we complete that conversation, we will emerge from executive session and adjourn the public meeting. So I'll poll the board to go into executive session. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Only after I find out if I can get into the session. Hang on, I don't have the link to get back in.
I emailed it to you.
It's a separate email.
I just emailed it to you at the beginning of this meeting, Pete.
I've got it here. Thank you. Yes, I I say yes.
Okay, good.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, so we will go into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.